Today is Wednesday, August 12, 2020. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. We just came from Executive Session. We're going to be going back into Executive Session briefly after this meeting convenes. And this is a pretty short agenda, so it's a special meeting. We're not going to do Board comments today. We're just going to get right into it. The main part of this meeting is going to be the superintendent's presentation on the review and opening plan, so we'll just jump right to that.
Thank you, everybody. And just give me a second, because I'm going to go to a podium and I'm going to ask Mr. Chris Kio to help me with the presentation.
Good evening, Board Trustees, community members, and colleagues. Thank you for this opportunity to present again on our plans to reopen Tuckahoe Union Free School District. My thanks first and foremost to our dedicated administrators, who have been really working around the clock with myself and Mr. Kio and Miss Lee to get this work done. We are really redesigning our schools. Our plans contain contributions also from our collaboration with teachers, who gave up their time during the summer vacation, and community members whose expertise helped us greatly, thanks to parents and teachers who asked questions, raised concerns, and helped us through the process. All these groups have shown one thing: their love for their school community. Together, they grounded this plan in what makes Tuckahoe special: it does take a village. As you are aware, we received guidance in July from both the New York State Department of Education and the New York State Department of Health, outlining the different mandated and recommended precautions and protocols we need to put in place. We will detail these in the upcoming slides. We were required to submit to the state three plans: one in which we bring all students back on campus, one in which we resume remote learning, and one in which we adopt a hybrid model of the two. Last week, Governor Gakcomo announced that we can open schools in New York. We are proud with how successful New York has been in flattening the curve, and now we can open the doors to students. In his press conference, he reiterated the importance of working with families and staff. He didn't have to tell us that, because we were a district that were already engaging our families and staff in the process early on, inviting community participation in our reopening committees, and hosting virtual town halls at various times during the day and the night, even 10:00 p.m. There was not a question we did not answer, or feedback we did not take, and it was extremely helpful to our plan. The same with our meetings with our teachers: we remain open and transparent. Our plan is not a top-down plan. It is the collective voice of the community and our teachers, wanting to reboot schools safely, and give parents the best education for their children, and make sure we have continuity for our students, and also parent choice. In our subcommittees, we met with many experts: doctors, nurses, scientists, operational supervisors, communication directors, and expert educators. Leading the charge was, again, our steering committee of administrators, who, again, are working now, setting up classrooms that meet the needs of your students. And we are hammering this out continuously for, again, a safe and effective learning environment. The governor also mandated, on Friday, that districts post their testing, contact tracing, and remote learning on their websites, independent of their reopening document. Today, we published three fact sheets, though they are not due until August 22nd, as well as updated our reopening plan over the weekend. You will see in our plan and on our fact sheets the way in which we support these efforts. For example, we have phone numbers and means of communicating with families who may have been exposed. We have also tried in our most recent publication to demystify who is required to quarantine and who is not. In the event of a COVID-19 outbreak, we have an administrative steering committee, as well as contact tracers, that will work with the Department of Health. We have more on that as we go along with the presentation, and also, we will also talk about how we are cleaning our facilities. As mentioned, we have provided on our website fact sheets on the three areas you see above. In terms of remote learning, we created a separate document highlighting our hybrid model and our remote models. We describe in detail the many ways we are delivering instruction through streaming video, Google Classroom, and other models. We describe the ways students will work, and the different programs they will be working throughout the year. For testing, and I mean COVID-19 testing, we identified local testing areas that have been provided by the Westchester County Department of Health. However, for families with individuals who may be presenting with symptoms, this document also presents you to local options. In terms of contact tracing, we also released a fact sheet that included new information from the Westchester County Department of Health. We will go through these in the following slides. The Westchester Department of Health issued an FAQ that clarifies questions about contact tracing, and it is now clear that the Westchester Department of Health are primarily responsible for contact tracing, and I mean when somebody comes in contact with somebody with coronavirus, and also for testing to see if they are positive or negative. But they will rely on us for collaboration. This was already in the plan we updated, and we will discuss that in the following slides. They also clarified when in isolation, which means somebody who has coronavirus has to isolate and quarantine, which is a contact, also has to, in essence, isolate. For example, an individual who is positive with COVID-19 must quarantine for 10 days, while an individual who is considered a close contact, and that means, and I'll go over this over and over, close being within six feet for more than 10 minutes, must quarantine for 14 days. And I will also talk later about proximate contacts. And the difference in the quarantine, which may be confusing to some of you, is due to discrepancies in incubation period. We will be prepared to advise families on all of these topics, and we will also advise families of what happens if there is a positive case in the household. For example, if a sibling is positive for COVID-19, the other sibling would have to stay home. We also have protocols in place for cleaning the schools, and I am saying right now that if we have a positive case in the school, we will be closing, as they say, for at least 24 hours. Until we see how contact tracing really works, most likely, we will close for 48 hours, as we navigate this process to ensure the health and safety of our community. And again, I'm not saying this is going to happen, but we have this in place. Contact tracing, again, is the process of identifying, notifying, and monitoring anyone who came in close contact with an individual who tested positive for COVID-19 while they were infectious. The Department of Health, in conjunction with our district coordinators, will conduct a case investigation. They will trace the people and places the individual may have come in contact with while potentially infectious. While the individual isolates, again, for a minimum of 10 days, contact tracers from Westchester Department of Health will reach out to the individual's close contacts to inform them that they were exposed, educate them what to do, and provide support as necessary for the situation. And they never tell who the individual is. That stays confidential. But, on the other hand, we will work with the Department of Health during all aspects of case identification as it pertains to the school district. This information includes the list of close contacts and proximate contacts, and also the location where the individual was. We will be looking at schedules, we will be looking at attendance, and in addition, the Department of Health, and we will talk to the individual who is infected. Here's a chart of when can I return to school. Up on the screen here, you see what it takes for five different individuals to return to school. For an individual who has had close contact with someone who tested positive for COVID-19, they may return after a 14-day quarantine period from the last date of contact with the individual. This is because they are considered a close contact. They are within six feet of the individual in an enclosed area. An individual that tests positive for COVID-19 and presents with symptoms may return after at least 10 days have passed since symptom onset, at least three days since the last fever, without fever-reducing medication, at least three days since symptoms have improved. Please note, all these three things are necessary for return to school if an individual tests positive and is presenting symptoms. For an individual who tests positive and does not have symptoms, it is required that at least 10 days pass since the date of the first positive COVID-19 test, and the individual has not had any subsequent illness. Meanwhile, an individual documented by healthcare providers as not diagnosed with COVID-19 may return after there is no fever and they have felt well for 24 hours. If an individual has been diagnosed with another condition, and must have a written note from their healthcare provider stating they are cleared to return to school. And all of these will be reviewed by our nurse or medical director. Lastly, if an individual returns from a trip from a New York State travel list of a hotspot or international travel, they can only return after completing 14-day quarantine from the date of the return trip. Okay, so Person A is diagnosed with a laboratory-confirmed case of COVID-19. If Person B has contact with Person A, they are a close contact, defined as being within six feet of a person displaying symptoms of COVID-19, or someone who has tested positive for COVID-19. Person B would be subject to mandatory quarantine. If it's a proximate case, and the proximate case is they are in an enclosed area such as the classroom for more than six feet, the DOH, which is Department of Health, will decide if they have to quarantine. Again, close contact is defined as being within six feet of a person displaying symptoms or testing positive for 10 minutes or longer. Close contact quarantine, proximate contact is being in the same enclosed environment greater than six feet, and that would be, the Westchester Department would have to say, if you had to quarantine. Now, Person C, which I get a lot of questions about, at least from teachers, is considered a contact of a contact. So that person may have been in contact with someone that has been in contact with someone with COVID-19. Person C is not considered at risk for infection and would not be subject to quarantine unless Person B had developed symptoms or tested positive for the virus contained in COVID-19.
Are these people wearing masks?
So, they have not changed that. Originally, it said the masks and six feet, and they wouldn't have to. Now they're just saying six feet.
But they have a mask on.
The way they, it's not in the WDOH document like that now. Okay, just a quick update of the New York State guidance. Okay, in designing our comprehensive reopening plan, we worked to align it with the documents that came from the state government, particularly the Department of Health. There will be a lot of extra text in the upcoming slides that we pull from the state, but I will point out to you the elements we see represented in our plans, because I've gotten some questions about this. So let's begin looking at the difference between what is mandated and what is recommended. You will see among the things mandated is six feet of distance, and the requirements of face covering if social distancing is not possible. We are going with the recommended, which is, we will want face covering with all staff and students, as well as mask breaks. Additionally, other recommendations we are moving ahead with is reconfiguring spaces, and our appreciation, again, to our building leaders. We are also looking at staggering arrival and pickup times, and we have eliminated the use of lockers. As you can see, we go above and beyond the state mandates in promoting the health of our community in relation to social distancing and face coverings. New York State document does not prescribe any mandate in regard to gathering, but does issue recommendations, and we are prepared to follow those recommendations to decrease the density on school grounds and use cohorts, just as the CDC recommends, and to the greatest extent that we possibly can. We are also looking at reducing bidirectional foot traffic, so we will have signs in our buildings, we'll have arrows of where and how people can walk. In the elementary school, it will be much easier to cohort, and in the middle school, high school, we are looking at block scheduling to reduce the amount of movement of students. In terms of hygiene, cleaning, and disinfection, you will see we meet all the mandates. However, we are going above and beyond in these areas, too. When students return in September, they will see hand sanitizer in all classrooms. Our teachers will be provided with appropriate cleaning and disinfecting materials. We agree that communication is key. In addition to meeting the mandated requirements you see here, we have designated coordinators to be the main contact in the buildings, as you will see when you look at our plan, and I am the COVID-19 Safety Coordinator. I feel strongly that as the district leader, that is my role, and I will work closely with building leaders, our school physician, and school health offices. We are also committed to a partnership with the Westchester Department of Health, and plan to make decisions in coordination and stay well informed by experts. Again, in the event of positive 19 case, we will communicate to families our plans to close buildings and shift to remote learning, again, probably for two days, allowing us time to clean the buildings, and also to make sure we have a thoughtful response, and work with the Department of Health on this contact tracing. There are many mandated and required items under screening for tracking. These will be explored in the following four slides. Among mandated elements in our plan was the health screening, temperature check, and daily questionnaires for staff, and periodic questionnaires for students. We encourage families in these weeks leading up to the beginning of school to practice temperature checks in the morning. We will be asking all individuals coming to campus, staff, and students, to attest to a health questionnaire. This data will not be stored, but will be used to ensure individuals on campus have not knowingly had interaction with individuals diagnosed with COVID-19, or traveled to flagged areas, and are not presenting symptoms of COVID-19. Individuals who screen positive for exposure or symptoms are not permitted on-site. This was recommended, and we remind parents of this fact, which we plan to do in many presentations and communications. Our plans speak to the mandated items here. For once, an individual develops symptoms during the school day, it is an involved and complicated process, which is why we must underscore to our community: stay home if you are sick. Once learning about a case, it is recommended we restrict social contact and mobility, particularly in affected areas, in order to avoid closure. As we are a small campus, this may really pose particular challenges. Upon learning of a case, we will work closely with the New York State Department and Westchester Department of Health. Since each school is unique, a clear decision chart will be made. We will make our best decisions, and we will make sure that the community is informed. We are mandated to take into consideration issues related to asthma, which we are, which our health offices have been diligent about. We also plan to work with local health departments to trace, as we spoke about before. We are remaining aware of the recommendation of the state that quarantine is required when individuals have traveled to flagged area. Again, I am reminding families of that, as you're still making your summer plans. In designing our district's comprehensive reopening plan, we worked to align it with the documents from the Education Department, and here are some slides. Our document has many elements. Here, it is important to note that we were asked by the state to post on our website a living document that is both fluid and flexible, and, again, it was recently changed. This allows our district to respond to new trends and new information. As this is subject to change, we will let you know when we update it. The document is posted, it's not a prescription for the fall, it can change, as we actually heard from the governor on Friday, but we will keep it up to date. There are a number of chapters in the document posted on our site. It is a comprehensive plan. Knowing how complex a school system is, this is just the foundation upon which we build a successful year. For the purpose of tonight's presentation, we are going to focus on five highlighted areas here. In Friday's press conference with the governor, we were asked to post information about these specific areas separately from our reopening plan. As such, we will also go over those areas tonight and make the board fully aware of these important reopening elements. Communication and family engagement. As we have discussed, this plan has been informed from feedback and input from various stakeholders: administrators, faculty, staff, students, and parents and guardians, local health department, local healthcare providers. As previously mentioned, this plan we designed is posted on our website, and signage is being placed throughout our buildings right now. We will also continue to communicate with families through text, email, which is through our Block Board Connect system, our newly-designed district's website, and through social media platforms like Twitter and Facebook. The plan details how we will communicate protocols, teach new processes, and keep families in the loop. We also ask families to assist us in our communication efforts by reinforcing protocols at home, helping children come to terms with the new routines and norms. As you can see by this section of our document, it is a lengthy part, because it's so important. It's about our ability to maintain appropriate social distancing, PPE and face covering, and we make decisions based on data from our local health department. We will have daily questionnaires and temperature checks that parents will fill out, and so will staff, and we will screen all visitors, vendors, and individuals who forgot to complete the survey. Our document goes into great details about face covering, and I will be sending an email blast out to all families about that. We believe that that is one of the most important things that we can do to stop the spread of this virus. As previously mentioned, we are striving for six feet of social distancing. We have repurposed spaces. As far as outdoor spaces are concerned, we've heard a lot about that. We have looked into tents, and that was really something that, number one, was prohibitive, and also, you would need New York State approval. We are providing meals in different locations, in Cottle, it'll be in the classrooms, in the middle school, high school, it's in various places. In terms of ventilation, efforts will be made to increase outdoor air. Windows will be open to bring in more fresh air. The facilities department will ensure ventilation systems operate properly and are being controlled as designed. Established HVAC inspection and maintenance protocols will be followed. There will be another shift in thinking related to drop-off and pickup, which you will be hearing soon from your schools, and we ask that you comply with those new rules. Lastly, our facilities team has really mastered the required cleaning regulations as advised by the CDC and DOH. For example, the custodian in charge of each building will come in before school to ensure there are no issues. After students arrive and are seated in class, the custodians will begin to disinfect all touchpoints, which are like doorknobs, railings. At 11:00 a.m., both buildings will have four custodians to start cleaning, again. At Cottle, the students are eating in the classroom, so the custodians will follow their lunch schedule, cleaning and disinfecting the rooms during recess. At the middle school, high school, they will be cleaning the three areas where students are having lunch. Bathrooms will be disinfected twice during the day, 10 and 1. There will also be an adjusted schedule during the school day that ensures that bathrooms do not have more than one student in at a time. Custodians will be disinfecting touchpoints, and there will be cleaning supplies in all bathrooms. At the end of the day, both buildings will be thoroughly cleaned and disinfected. One thing about our plan is the continuity of learning. Our plan is flexible and responsive. So synchronous instruction, you remember, is live instruction. Asynchronous is work that students do that could have a live teacher, but not at the moment, not face-to-face at the moment. We are planning for elementary students, K to 3, to be in school every day. That has taken a great effort on the elementary school's part, and we have used every single bit of the building. On the secondary level, it's been also a great lift by our administration there, too. We are setting up all the chairs right now, and we are ensuring that, to the best extent possible, we can sit students six feet apart. Again, all students will be wearing masks. In terms of technology and connectivity, thankfully, our district has given every student a device. K to 2 did not have regular devices, but we've ordered them. They had shared devices. Access points and connectivity, we have increased the bandwidth in our building. We also have done improvements to our technology infrastructure, and we will provide hotspots for families who qualify and need it. We have Mr. Kio with us now, and we are very excited about his support and his help in training teachers in this new model. Other details of the plan is visitors. In most cases, visitors will not be permitted on-site. Events like parent-teacher conferences will have to be shifted to the video conferences. Shared items will be discouraged. We are making attempts to go paperless as much as we can. Because of the intense cleaning regime we are imposing, aftercare on the site, as you know, unfortunately, is not going to happen during this pandemic. We are working with tasks on alternative locations and procedures, and Ecap also. Our food vendors will continue to ensure compliance with nutrition, and we will provide free and reduced lunch for those who need it. Attendance will be taken regularly, and the goal is that all students attend all classes. And we will follow up with students who do not. Students will be graded based on coming to school and doing their work. In terms of special education, our document pulls that our district provides a free, appropriate public education, consistent with the needs to protect students with disabilities. We are trying to give students with disabilities the education, as we have last year, and even this summer, by having summer school, students with disabilities are first and foremost. The same with students who are bilingual, English-language learners, and we are in the process of looking at identification, and the regulations, and mandates, and a new curriculum for them. We have designed a plan grounded in the health and safety of our students, staff, and greater community. At times, we are not in a position to act on all recommendations, but this is so important to us. We are, I believe, at the forefront. I know that a lot of districts are, or a lot of parents are recognizing that Tuckahoe has gone above and beyond in trying to figure out the best program for students. When you compare our elementary schools to other elementary schools the same size as us, they have not been able to get in as many students as we have full-time. We want to remind the community that we are in this together. We want to thank the teachers, the teachers at the middle school, high school, for jumping in to our new block scheduling, and all the teachers, really, this is new for all of us, to be doing a hybrid instruction when students at home are also online. Most of our learning will be synchronous, but there will be some asynchronous days, so that teachers can have training, that we can clean the building, and that we also make sure that we are following a curriculum that is meeting the needs of all students. Again, even though we are required to maintain a six-foot distance, we believe that in these difficult times, we will emerge stronger. difficult times, we will emerge stronger and more united. Thank you, as always, for your partnership.
Before I pass it around the table, if anybody has any comments or questions, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments just about how appreciative I am, and I'm sure the rest of the board feels the same way, with the effort that's been put into this. I mean, this is a massive, massive undertaking. And I'm just truly impressed with everything you've done, Dr. Goodman, and your staff, and the teachers, and really, everybody. It's just been an amazing effort, and the communication with the community has been outstanding, I mean, really, really good. The presentation, obviously, but everything on the website, the Zoom meetings, I mean, just outstanding communications, and just a great, great effort. I'm just flot by how great it's been. And we are ahead of the curve with comparing to most districts, and that's a true testament to you and your team and all the effort that's been put in. And I also wanted to thank, if anybody's watching, those community members that participated in the, in the forums or the...
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee. I don't know why I could not think of the word, subcommittees, because that's, that was a huge, huge help, and we got a lot of good input there. So, just wanted to make that comment, just, just really, really impressive. So with that, I'll open it up to comments and questions of the board. Last time we started at that end, this time we'll start at your end. Laura, you want to start?
Sure.
And I may have others as we filter through. So, can you tell us, so it's two days in, like, but the Fridays will be off, right? No?
No. So I will actually, Mr. Keo, I was, do you want to explain what it's going to look like? Oh, you need a microphone, I forgot, we can't just...
You can go up there.
You can go up there, you can help me.
So, based on the feedback from families, we heard that even if we moved to alternating days, the consistency was really important. So we designed a schedule around having one group in on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then another group in on Wednesdays and Fridays. Monday, we chose as the day, like you had mentioned Friday as the day that kids wouldn't be here. We chose Monday because it was a day in which there were so many holidays that disproportionately fell on Mondays, we just felt like it was a natural day. And then we divided up the Mondays that were left, turned most of them into instructional days, and then retained a few for asynchronous instruction to allow for teachers to do some training and some collaboration.
Additionally, again, that would also, even the asynchronous days would be, again, K three is full-time, five days a week, they're not on the A B schedule, but they will have some asynchronous days, too.
Correct.
So those teachers can have that time.
Yeah, the A-day, B-day schedule will be consistent throughout K-12.
Okay. And the asthma protocols, can you just, like, what for children who may suffer from asthma?
So, in our plan, it says, and in New York State, that not all students, if you have an illness or some reason, you do not have to wear a mask, that will be something that, we do want all students to wear masks. And I've done a lot of reading about asthmatics and masks, I'm on like every single doctor website there is. And I'm not a doctor, but many asthmatic kids can't wear masks. So we're not, but it's something that New York State put in their document. Again, if students have some kind of a, a illness or disability that they can't wear masks, we will certainly honor that. We will have to make accommodations that student may not be able to be in the same class. We might, you know, we don't have that much room, look how much room we have in the library. So we have to be very careful. So if parents have an issue, they should come to us. What we did find this summer, and I think I said this either in one of the Zoom, many Zoom meetings, or maybe at a board meeting, that we had special education students with some, with, who were in special classes with lots of different disabilities, including asthma, who were, who were, first of all, great and wore their mask all day, I was so proud of them, and, which makes me know that kids can do this. And students had their mask over their nose and their mouth, and some of them did have asthma, and they were fine. Again, every kid is different, so the nurse, they could call the school nurse if they have any questions.
Okay. And then we're seeing in states across the country who have opened, and we're seeing that in, in those states, there have been, you know, an uptick in passing along to just everybody, the kids, the teachers, the administrators. What, what makes us different from, from that experience?
That's a great question, and what's really different about us is that our, we are, in Westchester, I think we're point nine in terms of our spread, in community spread. So we're not anything, we're like this, this model, and we're nothing like everybody else that's to the west of us and to the south of us. Pretty much, you know, the northeast is, is Connecticut, New Jersey, and New York. We're, we have turned a corner. Our graph is the opposite of everybody's. So if the community spread gets above nine percent, then we will do things differently. If we see things in any community that shows that we need to go to remote learning, we're ready to do that. But in New York, right now, that's why the governor opened schools, because we are able to open schools. And the reason we didn't open schools to everybody is because of the precautions that are in the plan of six feet apart. But eventually, hopefully, in time, we will, we will have really flattened this curve. Pretty much, we have right now. So I was reading something that even said, you know, some of the guidance of the symptoms of COVID-19 in a school or community that doesn't have a high spread, most likely those illnesses aren't even COVID-19. In a community that has a high spread, most likely they are. So we will be looking at the community spread, but here it's very low. And Tuckahoe, I've been watching us too, very low. Please have your kids wear masks.
And then my next question would probably go over to Teres. So I'm hearing that there has been another report come, that has been issued by JAMA, JAMA, Journal of American Pediatrics, or whatever it is, saying that students, children can be asymptomatic and they can pass, they can get sick, they can pass it. So maybe, I don't know if you've heard of that, and maybe you can speak to that.
Everybody can, anybody can be...
Anybody, but the thought was that kids can really, it did, if they were little, you know, they less likely to, you know, pass it, or less likely to get sick, and now there's a, I just think there's so much unknown about this virus, so it's sort of like, we're sort of grasping at straws in the dark, trying to see what we can catch and figure it out as we go. So I, I couldn't wait to come so we could talk about that, like, if you saw that report, and maybe you could speak to that.
So one, I think you may be referencing one of the reports that suggested that children under five carry a higher viral load and can potentially pass the virus when they're asymptomatic. So I think that's more of a childcare, daycare issue than a school age issue, and that even though, the reality is, most kids are not going to be symptomatic, or they're going to be minimally symptomatic, but they're not, if they're, what I don't understand right now, to be honest, about the guidelines, and Dr. Goodman and I have had conversations when we spoke at the Health and Wellness Committee, is that it doesn't really align with the science, right? So if we're able to, like, for instance, I go into the hospital, I wear a mask, I'm not even in an N-95, I'm in contact with people, we're not really maintaining social distancing because we can.
Right.
Why is that okay? You know, and we're not getting sick because they've done, at my institution, asymptomatic screening for healthcare workers, and it was like a point four percent of people tested positive for the virus. So I do think it's really hard to tease out the facts versus the fear, but I've said to everybody, you can't really pass something that you don't have, right? The other thing is that there are also papers coming to show that, well, why aren't people becoming more sick, or why are people exposed? Like, when this pandemic very first happened, when it first started in March, I was directly exposed, and I never got sick, and I don't have antibodies, and I've been tested multiple times. So why is that? And there's been papers that suggest coronavirus is a family of viruses. It happens to cause the common cold every year, and there are four that circulate regularly within our communities. So there, one paper suggests that COVID-19 may be the fifth, and that there may be some people who've been exposed to many coronaviruses that could have some T-cell mediation, meaning like not actual antibodies, but they may have this, and I don't want to use the word natural immunity, because none of us are immune to it, but they may not be people that get as sick, because their T-cells, which are part of your immune response, can fight the virus before it makes you sick. So I think it is an evolving process, but I also think that, like I asked, Dr. Goodman, I don't understand why you, if you're wearing a mask, why the six feet is so important, and why we're focusing so much on that, because I think ultimately, it's really limiting what should be happening, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, which is our governing body, is still very steadfast, it should be all kids in school, based on review of thousands of papers at this point on an international basis. And I do think that right now, we are set up to do very well because we have very low community spread. And if everybody participates in, I personally think it's masks and hand washing, which are the most important thing, and if we can do that, I think we'll be fine. I also, I mean, are you, did I?
No, that's good. I, I think that that needs to be said, everyone needs to hear that kind of information from someone who's actually...
It's fact and fear, right? It's like...
It could be, I mean, but from, but from my perspective, being a black woman, you know, that's a real issue, because I personally know people who have contracted the virus and subsequently died from complications from the virus. And within my community, we disproportionately represent that the community of people who suffer the most from contracting this, this awful disease. So it is a big deal, and I think that we, as a district, we need to be mindful of that, because we do have a growing diverse student population. The other concern that I have is, again, I always go back to my teachers, they're not kids, they're adults, and, and, you know, every person, just as you said, can be affected...
I think they're more, yeah.
Yeah, and, and what does that look like for instruction, you know, them being out? And so there, and, and I go to our, our maintenance crew here that we have, you know, the protocols in place for them, they're doing a lot of cleaning, are we asking too much of them at this point? So there's just so many different factors, and I hear it out in the community, and I want to make sure that, you know, every part of our constituency concerns are heard and understood, and that there are some, some ways in which we can, we can deal with that. That's, that's all.
I think that's a good point. So I have here universal N-95 mask, which I brought for you, Dr. Goodman, it's your gift tonight. And, these are hard to come by.
I know.
Okay, I had to like, you know, promise a kid off, no. It wasn't stolen, I asked and it was given. Anyway, these are universal. So during one of our, was it during the subcommittee meeting, with the whole N-95 thing, this is another area where I feel like education's really important, because like, there's this N-95 craze. I see people coming into my office with them, I'm like, it doesn't even fit right. You're not, N-95s are meant, like, when I go to get privileges at a hospital, I have to go and get what we call fit-tested. So I'm put under this hood, they spray things, I'm wearing all, and there are multiple different kinds of N-95 masks. And then once they, you can't smell what they're spraying and under your hood, that's your mask, right? So when this whole outbreak happened, we all know, like, I'm a blue medium, or someone sews a stuff, be, whatever. So there's all different kinds, but now they have technology that you don't have to be fit-tested, and these are universal.
Okay.
So I pers, I think something the district should look into is having these readily accessible for our maintenance people, for people who are middle-aged or have coexisting, you know, things that could predispose them to becoming sicker than somebody else, so that they can wear it and protect themselves. And it'll make them feel better, I think, also, you know, they're, because if you can wear this and walk into a room with somebody who you know has COVID-19, and I can do a procedure where I'm standing over them, right, within six inches of them, never mind six feet, then there's no reason you can't clean a room, or teach a class, or help a kid, or do whatever you have to do, you know, to get your job done. And so anyway, this is for you.
I will save that for somebody who needs it now.
Well, maybe you can figure out how to order it.
I don't know.
I'm not saying it's for you. I mean, it's for you as the person who orders stuff for the school.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah. That's what I meant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was very informative, and thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the last thing, I was speaking to someone who, they own property in and around New York City, and they shared that within their properties that they own, some of the companies that they deal with in cleaning their own buildings offer, so like whoever their cleaning supplies are through, they offer training on how to properly clean using those things that are free. So I just wanted to put that out there, I don't know if that's something that the district can look into, because I know this is taxing our, burdening our, our budget.
Right, we are, part of this is the training, you know, training on even how to put on and take off a mask, how to wash your hands, how to use the chemicals for cleaning, so that is part of...
How to use, and how to wipe things down, like, there's a whole process and protocol for that. Okay, that's it, sorry.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, too. So I just wanted to ask for a quick expansion on what exactly a block schedule means.
Okay. Mr. Keo?
So, it's the schedule that students are familiar with, the eight periods in the day, but they'll be doubled up, blocked, so to say, so your first period will be two back-to-back period ones, which means at the end of the day, you'll only have had four courses.
So we all just got, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Check schedules.
Well, we just got our schedules from Power School.
Right.
So it says like, that the kids have periods one through eight, so they actually won't have periods one through eight?
So, they will have those periods, they will appear at different times in the day so that they can be blocked. So if period one is language arts, it's still period one is language arts, but you're going to have two period ones, and you'll get to period two, this is where it gets a little confusing, third period, because again, the time allotment is double.
How do you get all the classes in the day?
At the end of two days, a two-day cycle, you will have completed all of your classes.
Okay.
And the point of that is to reduce the transitions during the school day, and also to limit the amount of students that you're exposed to in that one day. So in essence, they're ninety-minute block periods that the classes are doubled up. So you'll be getting double the subject, and then you'll just wait an alternating day to have it again.
So, just to speak a little bit to block scheduling, it's something that districts really aspire to, you know, when we talk about project-based learning, and we talk about, you know, Socratic seminar, and all contemporary teaching and learning, you really want to work towards block scheduling. Our teachers in the middle school, high school have been very flexible, actually, in sort of this whirlwind of how, for safety purposes, first and foremost, why we're doing this, because we don't want kids changing, or teachers getting different kids through eight periods of the day. We will be doing training on how to use this effectively. Again, a teacher's not going to be teaching for ninety minutes, that, nobody wants to hear a teacher lecture for ninety minutes. So we will be working with them on, you know, how kids work independently, how kids can do other work on their own, have breaks, while the teacher helps groups the kids. It will be a process that hopefully is something that we can keep and grow with. Again, like what I said, you know, the silver lining is we're going to emerge stronger, with certainly getting better with technology. And we will get better at using different kinds of teaching techniques, and that, and we're lucky to have Mr. Keo here to help us through that.
I have a question, though. So if they're going to do the block scheduling, and it's going to be those, say, first four periods, that Tuesday, and then the periods, I guess, six, whatever... and then the periods, I guess, six, whatever.
Five through eight.
Five through eight, on Thursday. What happens, what does that look like on the, let's say I'm going to school Tuesday, what am I having Wednesday? Am I going to have those four again that I just had? Or am I going to have the ones?
Yes, so it's hard to explain without a visual and it probably could be its own presentation. But what would happen is you would have math for, you know, for 90 minutes. And then you'd have language arts, social studies, science. That would be your four classes. Lunch would be woven into that. Those would be in-person. If you happen to be the student on that group, that would have that in-person. The next day, all of those classes would be the same classes. But you would get the synchronous experience of being at home. And then the kids that were home would now have that.
That's what I wanted to figure out. Are they always going to have at least one of those classes live during the?
Correct. And that's how they're, they're put back-to-back. And again, it's a little bit easier shown on like a math.
No, I'm glad they're back-to-back. That's what I was, I was.
Yeah, so in some cases, you know, a kid who is listening to something, they can ask the teacher something in person the next day. And that could be part of the ways in which they break up the time.
Okay. So for the middle school, I guess in elementary, all the kids, will there be, like, when we talk about breaks, because obviously this will be different, will there be outdoor recess for them and will they be able to get outside and run off some steam?
Yes, oh, so we are, kids will be able to get recess. They'll be able to have mask breaks when they're outside, socially distanced. So that's all woven into the schedule too. Right now, I think in the elementary school, all our specials are outside. So we are really looking at kids getting as much outside as they can.
Okay, good. What about, what's our plan for full reopening, reassessment and all that?
So we are, you know, again, I know what the American Academy of Pediatrics has also stated.
I know, because I keep bringing it up.
I read it, I read it.
I know you did.
And, you know, that's three feet apart with masks. So right now, the state says six feet apart. Again, we can't fit everybody in at that. But ideally, if we can get everybody wearing masks when we go eventually to a, to more kids joining us and everybody in, we will have proven that we can do this. Because the three feet apart is with masks. And again, like you said, the masks are the most important thing. Summer school was very encouraging with our special education population. I know we can do it because it's going to be just the same as putting on your shirt. Come to school with a shirt on, you come to school with your mask on.
What about when kids are, or if kids have to quarantine for whatever reason? Are they going to then be able to virtually learn?
What's beautiful about our plan and why we like it so much is that because the kids are A and B, either they're in person or not, you still stay with your A cohort. So you could just be with your A cohort online during that time. If a whole class has to quarantine or we have to, you know, we're never going to say close the school. We're going to say we're going to transition to an online environment. Then everybody's online doing it. So if you're sick and you can, and you can be part of the class or if you have to quarantine for whatever reason, you can still get online. There's not two different programs. So our, our program pivots very easily to all the three different scenarios.
Okay, well, that's good too. So I also commend you, Dr. Goodman and Mr. Keo and all the administrators because I know this is a huge job. One of my patients today who lives in Scarsdale told me, our real estate's going to go up because everyone wants to send their kids to Scar.
Do you know how many people just registered today? So, how many people registered today?
I think it was 20 that I have to send an email to.
Which kind of is like.
No, she wasn't kidding. She's like, our district's a mess. We have, the kids aren't coming back. One of the surgeons I work with who lives in Westport, he was like, I heard Takahoe has kids who, because he pulled his kids out of public to go to private school because they had, don't have a plan. The kids aren't coming back. He's like, you're, you should sell your house. You get cash.
I have heard that too, because I have heard other moms say that. Takahoe is really, you know, and so are teachers too, their flexibility. And some people even, some districts aren't allowing parents to choose to have their kids online.
Right, no, I mean, you really have done.
And we are giving parents the choice. We know that some parents have, they have compromised people in their home. Or they are, for whatever their reasons, anxious about coming back. Some districts are not allowing parents to do that. They have to homeschool on their own. We're keeping that open too, so.
Right, that along with the fact that as board members, we haven't gotten emails, is a huge, huge applause to you, the staff, the administration, because you're really leading by example. So I'm super proud to be part of this.
And I'm really, again, the board has been extremely supportive. But I'm really amazed at the number of parents that have gotten on Zoom calls. We've answered hundreds of questions and they just were such thoughtful questions that I think that's why we've come to where we are, because of community involvement.
I'm actually done, believe me.
That's good.
Shocking.
Lori, you want to ask?
Sure, sure. Lori, did you bring a gift?
I did not, thank you.
She always texts me that, making me look bad. I meant. So I, I'll just echo everybody on, on a great job and really hard work. I know you're working really, really hard and I, and I, and all of us realize that. And we really want to just thank you and our students, thank you. To you and the fact, and to Mr. Keo and all of the administrators. So thank you. So a couple of questions I have that are a little different. One of the things that, when Lori mentioned, you know, what we're hearing out in the media, one of the stories made me think of this question was a school district where a teacher felt COVID-like symptoms was sent home. And then they did the contact trace to 100, it's a big district. So 100 potentially came in contact and they were quarantined. Teacher actually turned out not to have it. So I guess when, when we, when we talk about contact tracing and lab confirmations, which you brought up, is our nurse then going to, so let's just say, for example, a student goes home, parents tests, student's positive. Is the nurse then going to get the result from the lab? Be a confirmation, not like, I think my child has COVID, you know what I'm saying? Like, so that we don't get these sort of fires, right?
Well, it is, it is, I understand exactly what you're saying. So when a student tests positive, the Westchester County Department of Health is told, it may tell us.
Okay.
So we then, and that's why, one of the reasons we will close, because I'm a little, I think we need time to talk until we get really good at this, to the Department of Health and make sure that the contact tracing happens in the way. We saw what happened with that school over the summer in Westchester. And we just want to make sure, and I know the Department of Health, by the way, in Westchester, really sent out an incredible document on Monday that really was, that, that undid what I thought was happening on Friday. And it was, you know, where we would have to do the contact tracing. They are working with us. We had, we have, I have the Commissioner of Health's phone number. And she's, she always answers the phone. But it will be, it'll be a very interesting time because so many things look like COVID-19. And they will help us also figure out, again, there's the close contact, but there's also the proximate contact. And when we tell her things like everybody, when we tell the contact tracer from DOH that everybody's wearing a mask and that we were sitting this far apart, you know, we will take their lead on that, on who has to be quarantined.
And then just on, on feedback on that, so with the tracing then, you have, I saw you had, you had the three, the principals and then Mr. Tobin as the monitoring that. So the children that have come in contact, how do we, how are we protecting the HIPAA and the privacy of others? So a child gets identified, now I have to call the other children in that class and I would have to say, did you come in contact with student A? Why wouldn't I have to identify?
So we don't, we don't do the contact tracing. They do the contact tracing.
No, they just say you've been exposed.
They say you've been exposed.
They don't tell you who it is.
So we will know who the contact is. And I, you know, they're supposed to ask the contact, but I will also talk to the contact because I'm the COVID-19 coordinator, so I hope that like that.
So you would just identify that cohort, that cohort, which includes the teacher, right?
Which includes the teacher. But then again, because we're such a small community, you know, we have to see if the student rode the bus. You know, those kinds of things. So hopefully, parents will drive their students to school, walk their kids to school if possible. Because that really will start to spiral pretty much everywhere. But the good news is, is this 10 minutes or more. So it's not when you pass somebody in the hallway, especially because we're all going to be wearing a mask. It's not going to be every single person. And that's why we're also doing the block scheduling. Because we, the high school, middle school is where it's going to be more difficult because they do have different classes. But at least we minimized it to four classes a day instead of eight classes a day.
Okay, that makes sense. That, that explains it. Thank you. And then I just had a question regarding the teacher. So if the teacher is part of that quarantine and that teacher who's been doing those classes is now sent home, are they going to be, and they're asymptomatic, but they're just being cautious, right? Are they teaching from home then?
Yes, so that's where we pivot to. So let's say everybody, the class has to go home or we, or even have to go home for 48 hours while we're doing this. The teacher can teach from home, that whole cohort that is also home. So if we have a live distance learning, then we can be home and do it also. And that's where our teachers are so important. And they, they really have been great because we have, and over the summer, that they have been zooming with us and talking to us and helping us develop this plan. But again, if the teacher's home quarantined and the class is home quarantined, she doesn't have to take a sit or he doesn't have to take a sit. They could, and that also is beneficial to them. They could be teaching their class.
And the schedule is the same, so if that class started at 9:30, that teacher's live at 9:30 from home and they're at home. We're all at home, but we're live, we're following the schedule.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have another question. So teachers, hold on a second, cleaning, I just lost my train of thought. Ten feet of that staggering, oh, you mentioned special ed and then giving the IP, or mandated rather, a new curriculum, just curious.
No, I didn't give the IP. That was, we're looking at the L's, English Language Learners. Just because they are on the forefront of our thoughts with this. We're trying to bring in the ELL students, English Language Learners, at least the young ones in elementary. I think we are bringing in all the special ed and all the L's. We're trying.
Oh, okay.
Again, but with 20 kids moving in today, we just needed to be a little bit slower. So we're trying to do our best for, that's why we brought in K to three. Because we know that it will be hard for them to learn at home. They need to learn to read.
Thank you. And one other thing, two, just two more things. Ventilation, I was doing some, just some reading and, and about what some other district and some other buildings are doing that are bringing students in. And one of them just was talking about ventilation, the article was specifically about ventilation. And one of the things that they mentioned that was very effective, they did studies of droplets in the air with fans in the window but facing out, pulling out. Did you read that article?
I did read that too. I meant to give that to Morty.
Only because the elementary windows, do they even open, those ones that you walk along? Do they, are they able to open?
So Morty, Mr. Danko went and he went into every single classroom to see if they all had windows. I think they all did, but if they don't, anything that doesn't is getting one of those air purifiers, which would be great if we could get those, but those are very expensive.
Right, we had some for the construction, I know.
And we do have some classrooms that have.
And this is my last question, temperature checks and the screening questionnaire. So are we not checking as children are coming into the school or are they doing it at home?
They are doing it at home. And again, if you saw the New York State document, they, and actually I read the CDC document, they strongly recommend that it's done at home. And I know that there are parents that have concerns about that. And, you know, they are, they are afraid that maybe parents won't be doing that. Number one, a fever is not the main symptom in students, in children with this, with COVID-19. Kids have fevers for other things. But even if you think your neighbor won't do that, they probably, if there was a person that wouldn't do that, would give the kids some fever-reducing medication anyway when they came to school if they didn't want to share that. They don't want kids, they don't want the bottleneck of kids. And they don't want kids coming to the bus and they don't want kids next to each other. And they want communities to take, again, we're in it together. I'm going to write something, a pledge for parents and.
It's a civic responsibility.
It is.
It is, honestly. Like, I think that that's something we should weave into our curriculum. Like, it's not about us, our person, our agenda, it's about our community.
Right, and we need to get that out there. And we're going to be educating on that. Not only on washing your hands, but why we wear a mask. And how for young kids, I said this on one of the schools, on one of the Zoom calls, we can explain that this is kindness. We're keeping our germs to ourselves and you're keeping your germs to yourselves because we're caring about each other. And for the middle school, high school, they can understand and older elementary, the science around it. And how we can really help our neighbors and help our community and help the world if we wear a mask and practice the hand washing and the social distancing.
Dr. Goodman, on that note, so in some places, some people feel that wearing the mask is an infringement upon their own personal freedom. So do we have a policy in place, no matter what, if your kid comes to school, they have to wear the mask?
That's our policy. It was recommended by New York State, not mandated, but it is mandated. We took that as a mandate that everybody has to wear a mask, K through 12. And all staff and everybody who comes in our building. If they, again, it's about maintaining social distancing, but in our classrooms because we have so many people there, everybody will have to wear a mask in the classrooms and in the hallways.
I have one last question, sorry, last one. The students at home, so just, just from the experience that we've had, and again, we're making it better and better and we're working on improving it. The students at home, one of the things that were in the plan that I read, it said attendance will be monitored by administration and guidance. One of my concerns about the children at home, I mean, watching my own children, is that, you know, they get on, are they really listening, are they participating? Now, there will be some parents or some people fortunate to maybe have an adult at home or an adult in there. But as kids get older, they're up in their room, they're in the basement. And so, so I guess my question is, I know we're monitoring attendance, but are we also training or at least implementing with the teachers that the student has to stay on the camera, you know, interacts? A lot of times, you know, the kids quickly come on, they come off and then I don't know, are they there?
So the thing is, what we are going to do in our training is that, you know, even when you're on a Zoom call, if you turn off the camera, you're not paying as much attention because you turned it off because you're doing something else. So we want all kids to be on camera. If there's an issue, like kids can't, we will find out what that issue is. But the goal and what the teachers will want is all kids on camera. Secondly, it'll be easier to monitor 12 kids on camera with 12 kids in front of you, where you know they're in front of you, than when we had like, you know, 24 kids for the call.
Right, so I would imagine the teacher would have them up on the screen, they check in, just like the other kids in front of them, and then they stay there.
Right.
As simple as that sounds, it's, that's a big difference for somebody at home who, you know, has the potential to turn off the camera and do something else, yeah. Thank you. I'm done, sorry.
Well, there's hardly any questions left, but I have some. No, once, a fantastic job. I mean, in going through this myself, it's like such a huge undertaking and really impressed. Because in the city, we haven't gotten much direction, so it's, we're having a hard time. So I kind of wish I was with you guys. But I did have a couple of questions. And I guess with the, when they're at home, are other kids seeing them also on the Zoom thing? Or is it just?
Right now, we didn't get that, you know, we would have to, you can take that.
Sure, you're saying like would there be a screen?
The students who are at home, 12 who are going to be on the Zoom, sort of zooming in, do the kids who are live see them or is it just the teacher?
It would be just the teacher for a couple of reasons. One, for privacy reasons.
No, that's what I was.
The other one's like the technology reason, we want to see if we can like, you know, just keep 12 people on a call as opposed to 24, yeah.
And then I think you might have mentioned, because I was, I was wondering, what is the approximate number of students in each class? So it sounds like.
Yes, but all the classrooms are different, right?
Are different sizes, but I'm just like a range.
What we did, and I think where we were ahead of the curve is we had a good idea of the schematic and how many desks kind of fit, how many chairs and desks did in a room.
Right.
They're all different, you know, some can fit 12, some can fit 10, some can fit 15, depending on where we're using it. We are using every bit of space.
Right.
So there are classes that could be in the auditorium, that could be in the gym. We have classes in the gym. That's the only way we could do this. Because again, when you compare us, we have 30 classrooms, let's say, in the elementary school. The elementary schools that are bringing in everybody have almost twice as many classes as we do. So when you look at a district and you say, how are they bringing in K to five? You see that they have more classrooms. And that's where I give like the principals the, you know, the biggest thanks because they really figured it out. And again, the teachers for being so flexible because there's no more, you know, classroom. And they don't, none of their stuff is in their classroom. We empty out everything. We're going to be putting, we're going to get pods that we're putting furniture in that will be stored. We have moving, we're going to have to get a moving truck. Like, all of this is costing us a lot of money. So we have to realize that, but we're also looking at where our money is going and what we're using it for this year. You have no idea. But we've also been, because we have Li Lu. You have no idea. But we've also been, because we have Li Lu, looking at how much everything costs. We've been, um, frugal in finding the best people to do the work for us.
Okay, so in regards to materials and things like that, most kids will just be using their own materials that they're bringing, right?
Yes, when they're not, again, we're pushing a lot of virtual experiences, a lot of paperless. But yes, we're, we're discouraging shared items.
Okay, and with the, the virtual and the paperless, are they still going to offer, because I know that I am still, I'm still a book person, even though I do the world of virtual too, but the, I'm not a fan of kid being twenty-four seven on the screen. So I always ask for textbooks home in my house because I want them to use them. I get a lot of pushback, but, um, is that still going to be an option or it's not?
We talked about that with our teachers. First of all, a lot of our elementary teachers, we just came off lots of Zoom calls with them yesterday. And kids need to use manipulatives, um, kids, some, we have, we don't have all our textbooks online to begin with. So, um, hopefully, kids can have their own. If we share devices, we can spray them after. Um, you could, if you're using something of somebody's else's, you use disinfectant after or wash your hands. So there is a way. We can't get away from, um, not share, not using. So for example, um, teachers have level libraries and we have books for them. A student can take home that book when that student's done. In seventy-two hours, that book is okay anyway. So there will be some, you know.
But will they allow, middle school, high school, they let them bring the textbooks home to keep there? They use them in the class, they have them in the classroom too, but it's an option for kids to bring the book home and you keep it there the whole year. I just wanted to know if that was.
I don't, I don't know, but that's something that, um.
Yeah, we can follow up. I know there was conversation about, um, since there's no lockers and then kids have to carry more, trying to be thoughtful about, um, what we have kids carry back and forth.
Yeah, no, they don't take it back when it stays home.
Housing, it would even be, yeah, definitely.
That's usually how they do it anyway.
Yeah.
They don't carry it.
Yeah, we can definitely follow up on that.
Uh, what was the other one? Okay, another one was, okay, with the, uh, yes, keeping the windows open, the ventilation, I agree with all that, but will they also be running air conditions as well? The reason I ask that is because to wear a mask all day in, we've had some really hot Septembers.
So Morty, Mr. Danko is getting something for our air conditioners, like some kind of thing that he, I don't know.
Like a filter.
I'm not a HVAC person, but he did find something that we can. I didn't think we could use the air conditioners, but he found something where, again.
Because that was something I heard from kids that if we can't, I cannot wear a mask in the school because some teachers don't like to put on the air conditioner, and they're already thinking about it, like, I'm going to die in that mask.
Well, we're going to give, you know, teachers and everybody's going to have mask breaks, but we're also going to suggest that people dress for the weather. I mean, it's, it is, you know, and also find, but you can't wear gaiters now because they're saying they're not as, as good to be there. So find a mask for your kids and for yourself. We do have them if you don't have them. That is comfortable.
So when you say dress for the weather, because this has been an issue in this school in the past, does that mean they're going to allow the girls to wear tank tops if it is a thousand degrees in the classroom?
People talk to our principal about that because kids are going to have to dress, well, they can also wear a T-shirt.
No, T-shirts too, but they've had kids that they thought weren't appropriate and then they throw sweatshirts on and.
I just think that if a classroom is really warm, we have to keep that in mind. And, and with the windows open, the classroom could be cold.
Right.
Once the window comes.
Um, another thing, oh, with lunch. So it's going to be in different spaces, I understand, but like, is there going to be a lunch menu? Are kids bringing it? How's that working?
So first of all, it's going to be a grab and go lunch.
Okay.
There's going to be.
Do we know what that menu is? Because I'm just thinking ahead of people who put their money on a card.
Lunch, um, again, and that, but they, we don't have, we're not refrigerating it. We're not microwaving it. We're not putting things next to each other. Parents can't drop off lunch. There's no drop off. Kids can't order lunch. So let's say, first of all, I got to the school, I was like pretty shocked that.
Oh, yeah.
That this was happening. I was going to do something about it anyway, so here it is.
Perfect timing.
Um, so kids can't order. We're not having anybody coming from the outside.
But will they come out with what the menu's going to be before like people who put money on that account?
Yeah, Amy, if I may, um, I actually had a meeting today with our food service director and kids will be able to, um, there will be a menu. We're going to start very simply to start and offer perhaps three, two to three grab and go lunches that are pre-prepared with an entire lunch in the bag. And there'll be two choices, let's say a sandwich and a clamshell chicken nugget.
Question, though, will we know that choice?
Yes, we will give you that information in advance. It'll be online on the website. And as we get experience as to how this is working, we will hopefully expand the choices as well.
Okay.
And kids will have to, um, will get the choices as they come around on carts. And then they'll give the person their ID numbers and we'll charge them their accounts after the fact. So there'll be no touching of anything. They'll just take a bag and they'll have it at their desk.
Okay, let me see, I think, oh, the mask. I wanted to have a question about the mask and maybe Therese, you can weigh in on this. Because seen a lot with, I mean, I think mostly with the little kids, that they, you know, some are using the clear where you can see the actual mouth.
Have you? Yes, and I actually, um, I know for some of the, um, kids I see who do have more significant disabilities and get therapies and stuff year round, especially for, um, speech and language, um, the speech and language pathologists are using them because you really need to see some, and I'm sure it's the same for phonics and younger grades.
This summer, um, for the speech and language therapist, um, they used face shield. Um, again, because the New York State document does say six feet, except when a core activity cannot be done, um, you, you, or without the six feet or without the mask. Because we're supposed to have a mask on if you're not six feet, and those kids are also need to be a little closer, so they have worn the visors. We also have gotten as donations from two separate places. Therese, you might know what this is, like the whole, full, it's like the mask goes.
Face shield?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
We've gotten face shields from hospitals that teachers can also use.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking more for the little ones.
And you can reuse those and just wipe them down.
Well, we'll give people their own. So this summer for the.
Yeah, but I'm saying the teachers, if they have one, they can keep reusing it and wipe it down.
Um, Ms. Dunn, do you know how many we have?
Six hundred.
Oh, wow.
Face shields. So everybody, every teacher.
Three hundred face shields.
Okay, so we had a great donation. I don't know who, if I could say who it's from yet today. It was a community member because we have such an incredible community that, um, they, they gave that to us. But I'll ask if they want to be.
Are you shaming my one and then? Am I being slightly shamed?
Three hundred and one.
Community member? So teachers will be offered that. The summer teachers were offered face shields and masks because of the students that they were working with.
Right, okay, that's good. Wow, that's a nice donation.
We have such a great community. We really do. That's why everybody wants to move here.
I don't think I have anything else.
You good?
Yeah.
I'm done.
I just have a few. I promise I'm the best. Um, I just need a little more clarification on the schedule. I, I understand the double periods. What I'm a little unclear about is what that cohort is doing the next day from home. Are they doing, they're watching the same class again?
It's going to, because the instruction's continuous, so on, um, if they start learning about fractions, uh, the lesson will pick up the next day, but it will be done synchronously. So you'll be seeing part two of the lesson from home.
Okay.
So, but you'll have double the math, which is great for some kids, but, you know, it's, they'll have a break from math the next two days that follow, and that's when they'll have the next four classes that they didn't have the day prior.
Got it.
Or the pair of days prior.
So everybody gets one live and one home distance of the same?
Correct, and they'll be back to back.
Yes, I, I understand now. So cohort A is in, is in, is in school Tuesday.
Yep.
They're taking math period one double.
Yep.
The next day, same cohort.
Yep.
Is now doing math again for the first two periods with the same people from home.
Yes.
So lessons continuing on.
Correct, and then the reciprocal for the group that was home, they'll have it in person.
I got it, okay.
It may actually be more effective.
Yeah, and I think you mentioned before, Ms. Dr. Goodman, I think, I think this is a good segue into the talks that we've been having about trying to get more project-based on the idea of having a longer block of instruction where the student gets the instruction and then is able to do exercises and projects. And I think it's the way, I think it's the way to go. So that's good. It's really good. Um, the, if the rate of spread increases, the nine percent, who is the authority on that? Is it DOH? Like, who, who is the, the body is going to tell us that that's happening?
I think when it's over nine percent, that's going to be, you know, DOH.
It's going to be DOH.
But if, if we see a community spread on our own, like if you recall last March, when, you know, we were told we couldn't, we were fortunately in the zone. And I think that's why possibly we didn't have such a bad spread here. We closed with, with New Rochelle. But there were school districts that were like waiting for somebody to say, and some on their own just closed. I believe as superintendent, I'm able to do that too.
Okay.
And that'd be something we would talk as a board.
You can make your own call on that.
If we started seeing a spread in our community, let's say, or in a neighboring community, or we started, you know, they, nobody said anything yet, from what I read on the Westchester DOH document, that we can make that call. But I think once it's over nine percent, which is what the governor said, um, that's going to be over a certain number of days.
Yeah, so I, that's, I guess that's my question, because the governor is putting it as a mandate. So what is the governor going by in terms of who is the authority on that spread count? Is it, is it DOH?
So every day, there's a spread count. I've been watching it. Are you watching it?
Yeah, every day.
Every day. And then.
By region.
Yes, by Westchester, and you see how many were tested and how many tested positive.
Well, who's putting those numbers out? Who's that coming from?
That has to be coming from the Department of Health because they're the ones who are getting.
Yeah, I'm curious who our authority is on that, who's telling us that that's the rate.
Yeah, it is quite an amazing rate when you look at it, like every day. I'm fixated on it, but it's a favorite. And we are doing really great.
Yeah.
And when, and when, when I go around where I live, the city I live in and New York City, people are wearing masks.
And just to clarify also, the, so to Therese's point before, we don't have the option of bringing everybody back with masks or duty. In other words, the mandated from the state is that we have to have six feet.
Right.
Regardless of wearing masks.
I tried to, I, I did ask a lot of people about this because, you know, again, I understand it from every point of view, but it does say six feet and we are striving for six feet.
Right.
But because we're wearing the mask too, I feel like we have the double strength.
No, I got it.
And again, I think if we go to three feet, like the American Academy of Pediatrics says, I don't think our teachers will be as scared because that's when mask wearing becomes, that's part of their mandate too. So right now it's six feet. We can't bring everybody in. Not everybody's, not all our students are comfortable. Some of them have other situations. But I think in time, if we continue on this way in New York, I think that we could really see ourselves being that.
Right, right. But I guess my, my point is that is we don't have the discretion right now to do, to go with six feet.
That's why I did that, was the mandated.
Right, it's the mandated part, yeah. I guess the clarity is.
Also, if you looked at like Cuomo's reopening and, um, the plans that were submitted, right? It was like seven hundred and twenty-nine schools, a hundred and fifty-something had submitted plans a couple of weeks back. And he sent back half saying that they didn't meet guidelines or they needed to be.
So it's being enforced. The six feet is what they're looking for.
What, yeah, I, I didn't.
You don't know why it was sent back, but that's.
Yeah, but that was what the article had said.
Okay. Um, and then my next question is with regard to the technology piece and of, of the, of the distance learning, the remote learning. What, what are you doing, what are we doing to ensure that the quality of it is going to be good in terms of the streaming quality? I know, I'm not talking about connectivity. I know we, that's a different issue, but have we run any tests to make sure that, um, it's going to look good to, to the student at home and it's going to be good quality and they're going to be able to hear, be able to see? Are we doing any of that?
Uh, in many ways, a lot of the instruction will look a lot like the way we're running our meetings, which is twelve Zoom tiles and people in different rooms.
Right.
Uh, so we've had some personal experiences. Uh, we've modeled it with, um, Dr. Linhan during some demo lessons, where teachers play the role of students in class and students at home. And we've learned some of the quirks that I think will also be uncovered in the first few weeks of school.
Okay. Well, that's great to hear. I, I know it seems like it's common sense, but I'm, I'm very happy to hear that you guys are actually doing demos on it and we're not just waiting to day one to see how well it's working.
Correct, yes, yeah.
You guys are testing it out and seeing.
Correct, and even then we're still, yeah.
Ordered all teachers' microphones, like you saw when you were in my office, like, so that they can move around and people can hear them. We have document cam, cameras also.
Yes, we purchased document cameras. Uh, we've increased bandwidth to be consistent with recommendations.
Perfect.
And we're coming up with some best practices. Sorry?
We went over recommendations.
We did go over recommendation, yeah.
Just a clarification on the K through three full-timers. I, I know in your survey, um, they do have the option, those parents have the options of keeping their kids home. But what does that look like for those children? Are they, are they getting distance learning or, or is it basically a homeschool situation?
Well, we're offering, we're not, unless people want to, they can homeschool because that is part of the state.
Withdraw?
But, excuse me?
If you choose to homeschool your kid, don't you have to withdraw?
You have to, um, go through, you're not really.
It's a lot of work.
You have to go, we have to prove your.
Yeah.
Your homeschool, um, individual home instruction plan. So you can't just homeschool your kids.
Yeah, it's not that easy.
You have to, in New York State, you have to be approved by us. It's out of Ms. Keo's office, actually. So there are some kids and some parents that want to homeschool their kids, very few. Most of them are very happy that they have another option. So the K to three students would go online. Um, Mr. Um, Marash right now is looking at exactly how that will look like. K three is a little different than everybody else.
So the remote learning.
But they will be, have a real teacher.
Remote learning option is, is, is there for the K to three?
A full-time remote, remote learning option is there for K to three. And there are some parents that are, you know, asking for that.
Now, do those parents have the option of creating their own hybrid or no?
No.
So it's one or the other.
We looked at it.
Either you're remote or you're in.
Exactly. That was just way too much for.
No, no, I understand. I'm just, I just want clarification.
We had a couple of people that were seeing if they could do that. But we said no. We decided, we looked at it from every way because we do want to hear what people have to say.
I had a question about the, the remote at home, the days that they are home, watching. When they do, because obviously if it's a block scheduling, teacher's not up there teaching the whole time now, when they're doing some of those like group things or working with their friends in class, I don't, well, actually, I don't know if they'll be doing that, how they'll work with them. How are we engaging those other kids?
So that's where, um, some of the technology pieces actually might come, um, into play as far as making those connections. So you might ask your class to, uh, parent share, but you really can't sidle your desk up next to the kid. Uh, you have to keep the six feet, so you might open up your laptop and, and Zoom with a kid that's at home. Um, we can create breakout rooms in Zoom, so the teacher can assign groups that way. Uh, we're going to play around with some of the different configurations.
I like the idea of someone in class with someone at home. I like that.
We like that too, this idea of like working on like a continual project, um, throughout those days. And also with the, um, block schedule, uh, there's these opportunities to create different types of learning experiences within that block of time. So teachers are more able to try, you know, thirty-minute block of time for working together with someone at home and then trying maybe a lab activity, then doing a demonstration. There's a lot of flexibility in, uh, the delivery of instruction during a block schedule.
So we're going to, we're going to be doing staff development on it, so I don't want to overpromise right now, but that's what we're going to.
I would imagine there's going to be a lot of that, yeah.
I'm giving you work to do, no, everybody do these three problems. The kids at home will have their little, you know, just like on Zoom, they could say, I need help on this. And the teacher can help that kid while these other kids are here. So we'll be interacting.
So then they will be responding to the chat.
Yeah, so what, what about, what about testing? Is there going to be traditional testing? And if so, how do you do that with the two? Because some people take tests from home while others are taking tests in the class. I don't think that's going to work too well. Or is there just going to be projects that are going to be created? Maybe that's something you're still working through.
We're still working on it, but remember, um, people are in school every other day. So there is way to give, you know, taking tests. And just work with your kids at home, and then the next day they come in, but you're going to have to have two different.
Yeah, but you know, you know what's going to happen there.
Two different tests. I know that right away. And maybe it'll be more project-based.
And there's an honor code to the mask. There'll be honor codes with taking tests. So a lot of civic engagement and civic responsibility.
Uh, I only have two more, almost done. Um, any update at all on extracurriculars, sports, anything? Any determination made on that yet or?
Not yet. Um, you know, we're having a little problem, I, just to be transparent, with doing, um, our music program in Caddo. We usually do it through BOSI's, but we have used up all our time, number one, all our space. And we're not sure how we can schedule it. So that might be the one program that we're asking them right now if they can do it on our asynchronous days or, you know, on Mondays when one kid is off. So we're trying to work with them. That's the one part that is a school program that I'm not sure how they're going to be able to do next year. Everything else, music, art, gym is part of kids' days. Some schools are just doing core subjects. We know it's important for everybody. Um, secondly, as far as. Secondly, as far as extracurriculars, we're still looking at that. We have to look at our budget with that also and no, and how we would do that. We haven't, we would, we haven't heard about sports. It's supposed to be a decision mid-September. I think Mr. Tobin, the last time he was here, or maybe was on a Zoom call, presented that they may move fall sports to another time of year and do the sports now that can be done. But we really don't know. We're waiting to hear from them.
So what was that one music program that you're saying is in jeopardy?
So the
Cottle.
The Cottle music. I didn't realize, I mean, just new here, that we had, actually we do it through BOSI's. So we're trying to see if they can do it within our schedule. We have no space for them.
So like, do you BOSI's instructors come here? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Did you know that?
No, I didn't know that. I'd actually know.
Wait, I didn't, you're talking about the band, right?
Right.
You're talking about the strings, violins?
Yeah.
Right.
So that's not part of the, the band that's on their schedule? That's something different. I'm confused.
We're talking about Cottle.
We're talking about Cottle.
But if I'm in, right, so all the kids had bands in their schedule, so they would leave at certain times.
So the band teacher is also
We have no room.
Right, so like third period if you had violin.
We have nobody to watch them. We have no, but we have no room for them to go.
How about, how about outdoors for them? Is that possible?
What if they worked into after-school, coming up to the band, up to the room up here and separating?
We're not doing, we're not even doing task after-school.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
We could maybe do something virtually during the school day, so we're looking at that. But it's hard.
Dr. Goodman, if we, if we can't do that this year, we're not getting rid of the program.
No, absolutely not. It's just like we're not getting rid of tasks. That's like our first. It's just that this is a very strange year to be able to fit everything into a schedule when we have no rooms to put kids. We, we made a commitment to bringing back our young kids, to bringing back students with special needs full-time because they need it. And we just don't, and even bringing kids every other day, we don't have, we have thirty classrooms. We don't have eighty classrooms. We don't have room for everything. So that was the only thing in the schedule that Ms. Lee and Mr. Marash is talking to them because, first of all, there'd be an adjustment in the price of whatever we do in terms of it being virtual, if we can fit that into the schedule and have somewhere where the kids can go. But it will be during school.
I have another question. So with the
But it will be different.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Could it be virtual after-school?
It, we are not doing other things virtual after-school. That is, that's, that's a problem.
Because that's contractual. You, you're now grabbing your teachers after school, after, after-school hours. I would think that that would be problematic.
That will set up the whole thing, that we are telling them what we think we can do. We're trying to work it out. It's just a very different kind of year.
So, so you wouldn't say at this point it's a definite no? You're still working through it?
We're working through it.
But it's not looking too good?
Well, it's looking like if we can be flexible, it can be a something.
Right.
Wait, I have a question about the, some of the like gym and those things are, are, is that only happening gym when they're in the school or is that also going to be on the days they're home?
So, okay, I do know that. I was, I was, I was talking to Mr. Tobin about that because we can't bring the cameras or anything outside while the kids are having gym. So the PE teachers will have to make a program for the kids when at home. So maybe it'll be, you have to do this, 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 fill out this log, you know, and then
But like the other, but like the other things, they will have some in-school of that as well?
Oh, yeah, because on their other day, they will have it in-school.
No, because those ones they don't have every day. That's why I was just trying to figure it out. Like, how are they working that out? Like, are they making sure that one of those days, the way they scheduled it?
Yeah, so
It's a six-day cycle still, right?
Yeah, that's the other thing I wanted to ask. Is it a six-day cycle still or no?
Yeah, I'm, I'm also, I, I don't know, but I do know, like, for example, if you're getting math for half the time, you'd get PE for half the time, so it would be a quarter of this, to your point, you would be getting less PE in a week. But it would be supplemented with the asynchronous. The contact time like you're describing, yes, would be lessened.
No, because I was just wondering if they scheduled it that way, like they usually, like that they schedule it, like some, sometimes like they've had it that it's they're consecutive days and other times they've had it that it skips a day, one, three, five, then, then they would get some in-school. But if they scheduled it a different way, then it could affect that. I was just curious.
Yeah.
I guess we'll find out.
Someone's not getting home or on a six-day schedule?
I believe, I don't want to say anything, but I believe it was, I believe that, I don't want to say anything. I think it is. That's all I can say is I think it is. And I think that Mr. Linhan did a great job on this.
So, so I have a quick question on, on that too. So I'm sitting here breathing all this in and I'm confused about how all this is going to play out, you know, with the gym and the music and, and this day you want to do this, that, and the other. And I'm, what I'm hoping is that if I'm confused, and I was a teacher, so I'm hoping that there is going to be some clear direction for parents, something really laid out, so we have a real clear schedule and what that looks like and, and what it looks like. Because during the fall, the spring that we had, that was a hot mess. You didn't know what day was music, what was, what we were doing with the gym. The other thing that I think we should keep in mind is not everybody lives with respect to doing gym at home. Not everybody lives in a space where it's conducive to full-out, you know, some sort of exercise. So we need to make sure that we are, we are doing things that take into consideration those people who have limited space for that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. The other thing is we're going to do a reopening plan, part two. So this is like the part one that we had to have all this stuff in it. So we're working on a part two that really explains the nuts and bolts that everybody else cares about. I mean, you care about this too.
Sure.
But a reopening plan that shows you what the day looks like.
Right.
That walks you
Yeah, that'll be important.
And we'll have more Zoom meetings because they've been so great and they really have been.
So will they, so the, the two groups, will they, because that's what every student wants to know. Are you in, how are they grouping them? And will, how, how will they know who they're with, you know, that day? I guess they won't know until they, maybe they show up that day. But is it going to be alphabetical, one group A through this and then?
So it's going to be mainly alphabetical because that was the fair way to do it. And then, you know, you can't have, you know, cohorts of friends. People will feel number one left out. People need to know that. And plus, we wanted on the bus, students of the same family can sit next to each other. And we also have gotten on our, our, my emails and also on the survey that people wanted the same schedule for their kids. And that was the easiest way to do that. So we'll be alphabetical, but in some cases maybe not because kids, again, we have to look at it. Some kids may be, you know, not splitting that way if they're in very similar courses.
Right.
But it's hard in the small school. It's much easier
Well, I was going to say, even with alphabetical, if you have siblings, one class may split up differently than the other. So they could in fact, oh, I'm M, but in my class I'm in this cohort and my brother is in this, so then you gotta push the brother into the other cohort.
It's going to be very, and it's not going to be perfect. And we can't do it, it's that L and M and N. And also, let's say kids are taking a lot of the similar courses, they may be grouped differently. So the, the middle school, high school is, especially the high school is much more complicated. So, but the elementary was too because of us bringing in K to three and getting that done.
So my last question, and it's been mentioned many, many times tonight referred to, but do we have any idea how much additional this is costing us? Do we have any idea at this point what the additional cost, strain on our budget is going to be?
So I'm keeping track. We actually have a special budget code for all the special things we're buying for COVID-19, disinfectants, technology, all kinds of other things, personnel needs. We're keeping track of it. It's a running total. I don't know at this point in time if it even makes sense to start determining whether or not we're over or under budget because there will be some offsetting costs too that we're saving money on. But I am keeping track of it and I will report to the board and maybe at the next meeting or soon, within that timeframe of what it looks like.
Again, and the confusing thing is, you know, when you talk about extracurricular and sports, like, you know, if you end up doing that, then that costs a lot of money. If you don't do that, it's a savings.
That's a savings, yeah.
You know, all of those things we have to look at. And again, you know, we have to make decisions based on our students because we know what's important to them, but also we have to keep the budget in mind. So it's a lot, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of work.
Yeah, so I think, I think that would be great if you could do that for us, Lee, at some point. Because I think at the end of the day, when, as the school year progresses in the next couple of meetings, when the board is asked to vote for things that cost money, we'd like to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
How it is a contrast to the budget and how the budget's looking, which normally we don't worry about the budget in September, but
Right.
but we could be accelerating things right now, so.
We are, but we're hoping that it settles down so that we can have an idea of what we're, we'll be spending for the short term. And then we can look and see as we go through the year if there are unusual needs, we'll be able to track them as they come up.
Right, okay. That's all I have.
Are there any man, sorry, this is really it. Are there any mandates from the state as to what we have to have in reserves for PPE or any of that sort of stuff, cleaning supplies?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we've been going out and buying
I'm sorry?
We've been, I'm sorry. Do you have a
No, like is it a three-month supply or like X number per staff? Have they set guidelines like that?
They haven't, but we've been stockpiling based on what we think we'll need and then some because we want to make sure. First, we were concerned about running shortages out there for purchasing. So even before the school year started, at the end of last school year, we started to purchase masks, disinfectants, cleaning supplies. We put in orders for electrostatic sprayers, special filters for air conditioners and air conditioning units. So we put all those things in and that's our basic startup costs. And then we, as we start school, we'll track and see how that's being used so we can see and make a determination what we think we'll need through the course of the pandemic and the impact that'll have on the district.
And we'll see some things as we go along because nobody can come to school when they're sick, so we're expecting more substitutes and things like that, just for regular illnesses where you might plow, you plow through the day if you have a cough. But you're not going to do that if you have one during this time.
Dr. Goodman, I have another question, just, and it's probably going to be part of that reopening part two. Because you had mentioned with some of the masks, like the gate, are they going to specify so parents know what's acceptable?
So actually I'm trying to work on a mask email right now because that just came out. I, there's things with that study that they said then maybe, I think any mask is better than no mask because I'm on the doctor's site. So they do say that. But we will have, we, I'm going to send out a separate email about masks. We are not allowed to say in terms of the New York State document right now. In fact, we're, some, we don't even have to mandate masks.
Right.
So it says a face covering is acceptable. Anything that anybody wants to use, abandon it. It gives examples. But we will let people know because again, being a good citizen is having a good face mask too.
Okay. I think that's it, right? Anybody else? All right, good. So we do have some very, very brief business of the board that we need to get to, just two, one item and then one person, one personnel group of items. So it should be quick. So we'll move on to that. So that is business of the board, adopt and revise 2020, 2021 school calendar. Be resolved at the Board of Education, the Tahoe Union Free School District hereby adopts and revised 2020 to 2021 school calendar. Do I have a motion? Cynthia? Therese, second. Any comment? This is, Dr. Goodman, this is really to align those, those, those days in the front, front ends that we have, you know, professional development.
We're front-loading the superintendent's conference day because teaching will look different this year. So we've put them all at the beginning of the school year. So we have four good days to really work with teachers and give them time to adapt to this new way of teaching.
Can you share what the first day of school would be?
September eighth, after Labor Day.
So the changes to this calendar really are to reflect those PD days in the beginning of the
Yes.
All in favor? And then the next item is the personnel. Accept personnel recommendations. Be resolved to accept personnel action items A through P as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Therese, Tara, second. Any comment? All in favor? Okay. Last thing I just wanted to ask, and it's not on the agenda, but just a real quick update if you don't mind. I know we had a little bit of damage from the storm on, on Cottle. Do you have any update on that or where, what, what the damage was and?
Uh, yeah, we had a tree, a part, a portion of a tree fall on the Cottle auditorium. We had a tree company come in that day and remove it. And then we had some slight roof damage that is either finished being repaired or being repaired this week as we speak. It was not that expensive. We will take a look though to see whether we get insurance coverage for that as well. It was, I believe, under $2,000 the total cost.
So nothing major?
No.
All right, great. Okay, that's pretty much the end of our meeting. We're actually not going to adjourn. We're going to go back into executive session very briefly for a personnel item that we didn't get to before, at the first part of our executive session. So we're going to adjourn to executive session.